You guys ready? All right. Let's call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. Meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk's office at least 24 hours prior to the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight. Can I get roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Krishner.
Present.
Councilmember Piscali.
Here.
All righty, thank you. We're going to go to our first item, which is closed session. Mr. Chaffin, do you have your mic on so you can rattle it off?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have one item for closed session this evening. It's conference legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government exception 5495, 6.91. Name of the case is Flores Garcia versus City of Yuba City. The case number is 402104AS or 85F7G001. Thank you.
Thank you, you're the highest bidder. All right, is there any comments from the public tonight? Seeing none, we will move into closed session. All right, good evening. We're going to call this meeting back to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, where we're open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Krishner.
Here.
Councilmember Piscali.
Here.
All right. We are going to have the invocation by the Faith Christian High School chaplain, Rick Doherty, and then that will be followed by the pledge led by Vice Mayor Boomgarden. But prior to that, I would like us all to stand. And in light of recent events this past week, I would like for us to have a moment of silence in honor of the fallen officer and all those who serve us.
Ever mindful of the work that this council does on our behalf and in your name. They are your servants and they make many sacrifices to do the work of this city. And as your servants, we want to honor them with the respect that they are due. For your word says in Romans 10, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God; and the authorities that exist are anointed by God. Therefore whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God; and those who resist will bring judgment upon themselves. For rulers are not to terror for good works, but to evil." Do you want to be unafraid of the authority? Do what is good and you will have praise from the same; for he is God's minister to you for good. But if you do evil, be afraid; for he does to bear the sword. He does not bear the sword in vain; for he is God's minister as an avenger to execute wrath on him who practices evil. Therefore you must be subject not only because of the wrath, but for conscience sake; for because of this you also pay taxes; and for they are God's ministers attending continually to this very thing. Render therefore to all their due: taxes to whom taxes are due, customs to whom customs, fear to whom fear, and honor to whom honor. Dear Lord, we pray for your continued anointing upon your servants and pray that you would guide them and protect them in meeting their need, that they may continue to serve. Give them wisdom and humility as they look to you to accomplish their God-given purposes. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You may be seated. All right. We're going to move right along to the next item, which is our city attorney, Mr. Chaffin. Will you report on our closed session this evening, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Agenda modifications. Tonight, I want to switch items two and three for logistical reasons tonight. Is there any other modifications from the council? All right. Then we will switch agenda items two and three. And we're going to go into the fun stuff. We have a large group tonight, so bear with us. We have a lot of incredible things going on in our community. The first one that we want to start with is a business that I know is near and dear to several of us up here on this podium or this dais. And that is Vans Bicycle Center, who is celebrating 50 years in business, their anniversary this year. And I'd like to invite all of them to come up front. So Nick, Terry, Riley, Glenn, Claire, come on down and meet us here in the front, please. Test, there we go. So, wow. I'm going to think I'm going to put Mike on the spot here as well because I've known you guys ever since I came to the community a long time ago. And your dad, your mom. And bicycle shops, we've seen them come and go. But you guys have always been the steady. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you not only for being in the community, but thank you for the friendship. Thank you for what you've given back. And I'm going to let Mike talk real quick because I know he's pretty close to you guys.
Yeah, it's remarkable that a family is going on its third generation. This guy right here. To think of that in a community that you've got a business that's been here for 50 years. Nick's dad had a vision. I think he just wanted to get out of the house. But, yeah. And he brought this young man, which is right around my age, into it with him. Glenn's been there the whole time. Yeah, yeah. So it's remarkable. And as the mayor said, there's been a lot of shops come and go. And Vans has just continued to go on and on and on and on. I was given the privilege, probably, what? It was about eight, nine years ago? They expanded. And I built that new building, new section for them. And Nick was really, really, really apprehensive about doing it. But it's just, it's just taken off. So congratulations. Yeah. So it really, and he had his best year while he was torn up. I had carpet in the parking lot so mud wouldn't be pulled in. But, yeah, it was remarkable. So congratulations, everyone. Thank you, thank you for being part of the community.
You just want to talk, don't you? No. How about Mark, Wade, you guys want to? I mean, they've been in the community a long time. You want to say a few words?
So when a, when a business like Vans is able to sustain itself through the multiple generations and all the ups and downs that we all experience, it's a testament to the hard work of them and the value that they bring to our community. They're just not a bike shop, they're a fixture. Okay, they've, they've been here. And, you know, it's always comforting when I go down good old Gray Avenue and there's Vans, right? It stays, it's been there and it's a, it's a good feeling. So you guys are awesome. Yeah, I love my electric bike, too. It's what old guys ride.
Well, I've, I've, I've spent some time over there with you guys and thank you for your, your service. And just a quick plug, you have an event coming up pretty soon called Bike Around the Buttes that you participate. This is the 36th year for that. And it's... Right, right. Well, thank you, thank you for that.
This always happens. They all force say something and then it's like, okay. Well, I just would reiterate what the others said, but we've got to keep, keep supporting small business. Local, local companies put their heart and soul and sometimes all their resources into what they're doing. And that's what makes communities unique and thrive. So thank you for keeping up.
Yeah, for those of you that haven't been around, it's not usually customary that we just pass the mic around. But when a business has been in this community and like Mark said, a fixture of the community for 50 years, we're not going to pass up the opportunity because this business has touched each of us in one way or another. And hopefully he not just visited, but you got a lot of Wade's money. So now let's do the formal stuff. And it's with great honor that I know this council does this tonight. But Vans Bicycle Center's 50th anniversary. Whereas the City of Yuba City would like to celebrate and recognize Vans Bicycle Center on the occasion of their 50th anniversary. After retiring from the U.S. Air Force, Tom Van Evenhoven desired to open a business in Yuba City. And after serious consideration, he and his wife Peg landed their vision on a bike shop. With a strong commitment to offer quality cycling products, Vans Bike Shop was opened at 828 Gray Avenue on December 23, 1975.
A couple days before Christmas, yeah.
That was great timing. In 1980, they moved to the current location, where businesses, where the business continued to grow, necessitating a building expansion in 1991 and again in 2008. Vans Bicycle Center is a third-generation family business, where Tom and Peg's son Nick and his son Riley have taken over the running of the business alongside their business partner, Glenn Brown. Glenn started working at the bike shop in 1976 while he was still in high school. He was in high school in '76? Okay. All righty. Let's see. Yeah, while he was still in high school. And he later became an owner and partner in the business. And that's been a successful partnership for you guys. Whereas Vans Bicycle Center is deeply rooted in Yuba City with a tradition of community involvement that includes Bike Around the Buttes and the Ride for Awareness dedicated to raising awareness of breast cancer and supporting those fighting the disease. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate Vans Bicycle Center on their 50 years in business and wish them many more years in our community. Let's give them a round of applause. And likewise, oh, he passed. We've got a, something for the shop as well. Now, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to, first off, say thank you to the council members. And especially Mike Piscali, which is a personal friend, and Dave Shaw, here, the mayor. It's nice to be recognized, you know? It feels good. I don't think we could have done this without a crew. You know, our employees who have been through thick and thin, up and down. They stuck COVID. They stuck right with us through COVID. So that's very important. And the biggest thing is the community. They've supported us, like I said, through the ups and downs. In a small business, it's tough anymore. You've got online everything now. And, you know, the only thing we can offer is really good service and the personal connection we have with people. So, good partners. And here's the next generation that's going to take it over right here is Riley.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
All right. I'd like to ask Mackenzie Murray if she would join us up front here. Right on down. Thank you for joining us tonight. And on behalf of the council, I want to say thank you for what you do on a daily basis. Because everything that I've learned about you since this particular, what we're about to do here, the certificate, the letter or the certificate of commendation came forward, it's pretty incredible. You know, you have a job that molds and teaches our young people for the future, and the kids are our future. And I want to present this to you and just say thank you for everything that you do. And you are an incredible example to our kids. And you have made a tremendous impact on not only the students and the family that was affected, but also that entire student body, as many of them are here tonight. And we just all want to take this moment to say thank you. And with that, we have a certificate of commendation. I need these things. That's what happens when you go to school in the eighties. The Life Saving Award to Ms. Mackenzie Murray, teacher at Twin Rivers Charter School. For your courageous actions and quick thinking that saved the life of a student, your bravery is a moment, your bravery in a moment of crisis is an inspiration to all and has earned you the deepest gratitude and respect of our entire community. So I'd like to present you with that. And then this is a little something from myself that you can read later. And we just want to say thank you. So let's give her a round of applause.
Just a few. Owen, do you want to come up here real quick?
Yeah, come on up.
Going to try to get through this without crying. Well, thank you very much for this recognition. I am truly grateful for the ongoing training that I've had with hands-on CPR and first aid training. I think that's extremely important because not all schools require you to do it hands-on. And because of that, I was able to help out Owen. And now I get to see his smile every single day when he comes to class and to continue to watch him grow. And for that, I'm extremely grateful. So, yeah. So thank you all for coming and supporting. And my tiger tribe that's here, they knew that this was going to be a little difficult for me. And thank you for showing up and my family. So it's, it's an honor. Thank you.
All right. This is, nights like these are fun, where we get to recognize businesses. We get to recognize incredible people in our community that's done incredible things and continue. And there's another group here tonight that we want to recognize. And I'd like to invite the Faith Christian Girls varsity basketball team and their coaching staff to come forward down here and join us right down here, if you would. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All up here in the middle. Put the coach, whoever's going to talk right here in the middle with me. Congrats, guys. Congrats. We're going to get left behind here, totally. So, all right. Well, I'm going to, we're going to slide here somewhere.
We work as a group, Will, we can move.
Test one, there we go. All right. Let me see, where are we at? Oh, he's got them over here. If the, the vice mayor will help me, we've got certificates for each of you from the City of Yuba City. And we can hand those out. And for those of you that do not know, this team that's up here, well, they're carrying a banner. They might tell you something they did. They won the North State Championship in their division of girls' high school basketball. So let's give them a round of applause. Oh, do I want to call, oh, I can call them up. He's, he's, he's queuing me, so. All right. With that, to be specific, it's the CIF Northern Regional Championships, 24-25 Division VI Girls Basketball Champions. Ella, is it? Hey, Barrel? Haberly. Okay, there we go. Lauren Harris? Okay. Mia Bryan? Hannah Hessog? Okay. We can't make it any easier, I tell you. Presley Berry? Okay. Yep. Amber Smith? Kimber Cunningham? Esther Borleene? Kiana Marin? Mandy Fitzgerald? Okay. Abby Cunningham? Oh, and then we've got Shane, who is the assistant coach right over there. We've got Grant, who is the other assistant coach. And we've got Audrey Bliss, who's another assistant coach. In Nebraska. And then we got Jeff Harris, who's their head coach. So let's give them a round of applause. And before we go any further, I'd like David Morgan to come down because our friends at Congressman Lamafa's office noticed what you guys did as well. So David, do you want to come down and say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Shaw. So I've got some special congressional certificates to recognize your championship season and efforts. We greatly appreciate you guys winning and showing, you know, Yuba City rocks, so we greatly, greatly love that. But I will give these to your coach and he can distribute those in the, in the effort of time. But we greatly appreciate your guys' efforts and your championship season and what you guys were able to do. That's huge. I know, I played football and baseball. I know that's something, when you guys win a championship, it's not something that people can take away from you. So you guys get to, you get to have the bragging rights whole rest of your life. So that's awesome. Congratulations again. And I'll turn it over to you.
All righty. And thank you, and thank you to Congressman Lamafa for, for doing this. So. Actually, do you want to say a few words before we go on?
Sure, yeah. First, people that know me are nervous this nigga be short, I promise. You're all good, you're all good. Yeah, start the clock. No, but there's just so many amazing people in here that have supported these girls so much this season. You guys know how special this group is. Not everyone here had the privilege of watching this team play. But I just want to let you know there's so many amazing things going on at Faith Christian and I think nothing exemplifies it better than this amazing group of girls right here. So if you didn't get, if you didn't get to see them play, the one thing I'll assure you of is this group up here really represented the Yuba Sutter area throughout the state very well. And you should be very proud of, of these young ladies that are in the community. So if you didn't get a chance to see us, we have no seniors on the team. So feel free to come support us next year. Hopefully we can run it back. That's what we want to do, yeah.
Well, before we get a few more pictures, I know that you've got the trophy from the evening. You've got the banner, correct? My wife and I got a little idea. And I know you guys have seen this already because it has your signatures on it. But from myself and my wife, hopefully this can go in the Faith Christian trophy case at the school. Here is a basketball that has the picture from the evening. It says at the top, Faith Christian High School Lady Lions, CIF Northern Regional Champions, 2024-25 Division VI Girls Basketball Champions. At the bottom, it says Faith Christian, I believe that was '58, and Cornerstone Christian '53, March 11, 2025. And every one of you did us the honor of signing this the other day. So hopefully this can forever go into the shrines there at Faith Christian.
It'll be there tomorrow.
Okay. Before we go, one more. Christie, if I can get your help. And Derek, can I have you come down? Got one more little surprise for you. And come on in the middle here. You guys probably remember, because you guys have already done this, you signed two basketballs. I had the idea of putting the second one in the mayor's office to be on display. But my wife and I had a different idea. And I talked with, with your administrator. And I hear you guys have a dinner and a meet the team and a fundraiser on Friday night, I think it is? 6:00 PM. We want to donate the sister to the one that's going to be at Faith Christian to the school tonight so that you guys can use it as part of your annual fundraising on Friday night. And we hope it brings you great success. So.
All right. Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Everybody sprang. Do we want to put, do we need to put the council on the back? Okay. All right. Now if you guys will stay here, the council will go stand behind you and that way it'll, hopefully everybody will fit right in there. Oh, we might need something to stand on. All right, well, thank you all. Congratulations again. Thank you. Derek, thank you. All right. All right. We're going to just take about a two-minute recess in case people would like to leave or whatnots before we pick up the meeting here in just a moment. All right, we're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back to order. And we're going to go straight to agenda item four, which is public communication. go straight to Agenda Item 4, which is Public Communication. Appearance, Appearance of Interested Citizens, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. If someone could grab, they're grabbing them, perfect. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taking on action items on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered as time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will allot five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? Any comments from the public this evening? All right, moving on, we're gonna move on to Consent Calendar. All matters under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time council votes on the motion, unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comments on the consent, uh, calendar? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I bring it back to the council for either comments, questions, or action.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve Consent Calendar items 5 through 7?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Moving right on to Agenda Item 8, which is the Rebate Program Guidelines for Commercial Turf Replacement Projects. Mr. Ben Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, and members of the city council. So the item before you tonight is regards to a commercial landscape conversion rebate program. So it's really to consider establishing a rebate program to switch turf over to drought tolerant landscaping. And so, I'm gonna go through the, pretty quick here, but please ask me any questions. And so, the city received about a $3.4 million grant, and as part of that grant, there's a rebate program that we requested, because as, as California has introduced legislation, we're really going towards, uh, an effort to use less water in, in landscaping, and so there's specific legislation that's been enacted about ornamental turf that this project, that this rebate program is targeting. And so, California faces these recurring drought conditions, um, there's been legislation that's been put in, into effect that, um, it caps what, um, the targets for our water, for our water users on how much they supposed to use, it, it changes the building codes on the fixtures, and then also the drought tolerant in the landscaping that goes into housing. And so, as part of a kind of a proactive program to help existing, um, commercial properties, this program, this grant was put into effect to help switch the turf out. So, funding was in June 22, Urban Community Drought Relief Grant Program, $3.415 million to replace non-functional turf with water efficient landscaping, no local match funds are required for the city. And so, what we're proposing tonight is to establish this rebate program, so that a commercial property owner can receive up to $5 per square foot to go, with a cap of $10,000, first come, first served. And the eligibility is, it's really they have to have existing irrigated lawn that uses city potable water, um, and then they would change that out to something more efficient. And so, there's, um, the funding would be applicable to design and construction aspects of it. So, we're trying to make it pretty simple, where they submit an application, the city conducts the preapproval inspection to see what's out there, um, they complete the project, the final, the city will, um, review that it actually occurred, and then they'll submit receipts with, um, city staff, then making, making a payment request back to them. You know, again, the expects, the expectations with the grant is there's water savings, there's lower maintenance costs, the aesthetic environmental benefits, that we're gonna, definitely wanted to make sure it's not something ugly when it comes back in, and we'll work with them, um, as, as we help do that. A total funding for the grant, um, program is, is $575,000, again, with no matching funds from the city. And so with that, tonight, the recommendation is to approve rebate guidelines for commercial customers to convert turf to lower wa, water use landscaping for up to $10,000 per commercial location, in accordance with grant requirements, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on Item 9 Rebate Program Guidelines for Commercial Turf Replacement Projects. As recommended.
All right, I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. We're moving on to Agenda Item 9, which is Pedestrian Safety and Striping Improvements Plans and Specifics. Mr. Wolf, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I actually have three plans and specifications, uh, presentations for you all. So I'll start with this one, for pedestrian safety and striping improvements. So, to give background, in August of 2020, the city developed a systemic safety analysis report, which more or less analyzed the entire city for crash conditions, uh, safety improvements and other items that would help improve, provide projects that the city could turn, in turn, um, apply for grant applications and receive funds to implement said safety projects. So, in October of 2020, the city, um, applied for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, for the grants to make pedestrian crossing and ADA ramp improvements. In March of 2021, the city was notified that it was awarded $194,008 funds for the pedestrian safety and striping improvements project, and then, from that time on, the city staff has been working on developing plans and specifications for the project. So this map, it's quite a bit on here, but we tried to break it down, we're kind of doing improvements all over the city. The base bid is more focused on what was funded by the grant, which is improvements at school crossings near, in near public facilities, so you have areas like Regency Park, Butte Vista Elementary, April Lane, King Avenue, Gray Avenue, River Valley, the library and Fire Station 1, Sutter Medical Area, Park Avenue Elementary, Yuba City High School, and then a couple areas in the southern part of town. And then, we have add alternate items as well, those are more for some neighborhood areas that, um, over time, we've noticed needed some striping refreshments and upgrades. So in total, um, we're looking at, for just the base bid, to install about 1.59 miles of stripe, uh, crosswalk striping, about 1.2 miles of traffic striping along the center line, um, and on the edges of the road, um, and upgrading 42 existing curb ramps to ADA compliance. In the add alternate schedule, we're adding about three-quarters of a mile of striping improvements. So here's an example of one of the projects, or one of the areas located in the project, this is over by, um, I believe it's Park Avenue Elementary. The existing crosswalk is not a high visibility crosswalk, and it's kind of skewed, so the students have to walk further to get across the street. So that's not ideal. Also, the ADA ramps were built in the late 80s, early 90s, and they're not up to current standards. So in order to, uh, make the safest option for students, what we're proposing to do in this area is install ADA ramps on, um, all areas where the crossings are happening, and actually, um, install an additional ADA ramp to shorten the crossing distance for students. So you can see that over, on the left side, it's kind of the construction plan, and on the right side, it's striping improvements, that location, and that's kind of the character of most of the locations in the project. So, the proposed schedule is, if we receive approval tonight, advertise for bid, we'd be looking at awarding the contract in May, and then starting construction in summer with project completion around fall. Fiscal impact is $785,000, um, which includes 10% contingency, 5% construction management. The add alternate schedule is $115,000, also including contingency and construction management, for a total estimated cost of $900,000. So, from the grants, um, so we have three separate CIP accounts that would be proposed to funding this project, the ADA improvements account, um, which is a large chunk of the project, the striping and markings account, which is a regular, um, striping and marking, um, project account for us, and then the pedestrian safety and crosswalk upgrades account. The plan is, once we receive bids, we will bring the item back to council and provide detailed fiscal impacts for the project. So with that, um, our recommendation is adopting a resolution to adopt a CEQA Class 1 categorical exemption, approving plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids on the pedestrian safety and striping improvements project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring this back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to approve, uh, Item 19, or excuse me, Item 10, staff's recommendation.
Item 9?
9.
Okay. I have a motion to approve staff recommendation, Item 9, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Are you confused today?
I'm confused.
Okay. All right, so is that a unanimous aye?
That's unanimous.
All right, eyes have it, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, which is again, more plans and specs on the citywide sign upgrades. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This presentation's gonna be very similar to the last one, as it's from, uh, the funding from this project is from the same, same grant source. So this project, um, was to upgrade, or to audit every single sign that's owned by the city within the city, um, and then upgrade whichever signs don't meet, um, current compliance per, uh, the manual and uniform, uh, traffic control devices. So, same background as the last, where, uh, we developed our SSAR in 2020, um, applied for the grant in October of 2020. In 2021, we received a pretty large award for this one, in the amount of $1,835,000, or $35,400. And then, um, once again, from 2021 to current, we've been developing plans for this project, and, uh, performing the audit. So this map, a lot of polka dots all over the city, shows all the different signs that are located within the city, um, and then on the right side, you'll see, um, colored descriptions that match the signs. So, we had 4,153 signs that were, um, audited in 2024, out of that, about 2,269s will, of those will be needing to get improvements, including removal, relocation, if they're not in a correct location per standards, replacement, rehabilitation, um, cleaning if necessary, and, um, obviously retaining if there's no issues with the sign. Here's a few examples of some of the signs that were audited in the city, this one on the left has some graffiti on the all-way placard, the middle one, um, is faded, and it's not retro reflective anymore, and then the one on the right is a stop sign that's leading over, and it also needs to be adjusted, um, per current standards, um, further back from the stop bar. So, um, as with the last, uh, project, the proposed schedule is advertise and bid this month, next month we would be coming back to council for award, and then anticipating, anticipating construction in summer through the fall. Engineer's estimate is 1.5 million for construction, um, currently in CIP account 1315, which is the dedicated account for the project, we have 1.529 million. Um, and once again, detailed fiscal impacts will be provided to council at the time of award. With that, um, our recommendation is adopting a resolution, adopting a CEQA Class 1 categorical exemption, approving the plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids on the citywide signal, or, citywide sign upgrades project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a, sir, I move to adopt a resolution adopting a CEQA Class 1 categorical exemption, approving the plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids for the citywide sign upgrades project.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, let's go to Agenda Item 11, Pluma Street Water Tower.
Thank you again, council and mayor, uh, this one's a little bit, uh, more, uh, more fun, this one's for the Pluma Street Grant Improvements Project Approval Plans and Specifications. Here's the rendering, which I think you've all seen a few times to this date, but this is the proposed plaza area that's going to be installed under the water tower, which also includes the gateway arch at the entrance of Plumas and Bridge Street, as well as, um, trash and recycling upgrades throughout the Plumas and Center Street corridor. So background on this one, uh, in 2022, the city applied for a grant for, um, this overarching project, then has many, uh, different components. In March of 2022, the city was awarded 2.2 million in grant funding, and then, between 2022 and 2025, um, the city's been working on procurement of contracts for the various phases. So, um, as I said, this was kind of an all encompassing project, um, the first phase was the, what you see in the top left, which is the painting, abatement, and lighting of the water tower and installation of logos, that was completed, I believe, in, uh, early 2024. The one on the top right is the newest addition, that was the installation of Festoon-style lighting across Center Street, that photo was taken, I believe, last Friday night, so that's, uh, brand new, definitely recommend checking that one out if you're in the area. And then the last two are what we're talking about tonight, that's the park improvements at, um, the area under the water tower, and then the gateway arch, as well as, um, the amenities that go along with all of that. So our timeline for this project is advertising for bid in, um, April of this month, um, coming back for a contract award to council in May of 2025, um, starting construction in June 2025, and then completing the project this fall. For the fiscal impact on this one, um, staff's engineer's estimate was $1,070,000, that includes 10% contingency, um, the construction cost, and a 3% for, uh, construction management and inspection, as, uh, staff is going to be handling the inspection and construction management internally. Currently, CIP account number 1268, which is the account for this project, has sufficient funds, um, and staff will come back to council at time of award, uh, to provide a more detailed fiscal impact. And with that, um, our recommendation is adopting a resolution, adopting a CEQA Class 4 categorical exemption, approving the plans and specifications, and authorizing advertisement for bids for the Pluma Street Water Tower Plaza Project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, um, the plaza?
Yes.
Portion, um, is there going to be anything with the plaza name that's going to be involved in the construction, like say, the flatwork and as such?
Yes, um, we have a seat wall that's going to be installed, kind of at the base of the water tower, um, which we're hoping to have embedded, uh, concrete letters inside of that, so there is a bit of time, um, the contractor doesn't need that information immediately, it can be a while, until, um, the city comes to a decision on that item.
Okay, all right. I was just worried about the urgency of it, being I'm on that ad hoc, and I know you've reached out to us, and we've been a little neglectful to you, and I apologize for that. Um, so, okay, all right, great, that answered my question.
Yep, any other questions? All right, hearing none, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, make a motion on Item 11, Pluma Street Water Tower Plaza Plans and Specification as recommended.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So, all right, let's move to Agenda Item 12, which is Future Agenda Items, is there anything that members of the council would like to see come forward at a future meeting?
Mayor, I've been kind of concerned about possibly, there are some, there are some delinquent projects that aren't completely resolved in the city as far as permits that have been pulled, and if we could get kind of a, an idea of what that would, what, what that looks like, uh, Mr. Moody?
Yeah, I could definitely share, share a list with the council as far as, uh, you know, there's a timeframe when permits are pulled versus when they expire, and then when they, um, require, um, when they, when they go stale, when they don't call for permits and not closed out. I could give you a breakdown and share that with the council.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then we will take that and have that brought back at a future meeting, or an update, uh, to the council. Move to, uh, reports, uh, we'll start with Mr. Moody, you're our, uh, acting city manager tonight, do you have anything to report to us?
You know, like, a few items, you had a pretty easy meeting for me, thank you. Um, city hall closures to the public started, um, this last Friday, or two Fridays ago, so they've been for the last two Fridays, and the staff feedback is that they've, they've gone well, the feedback to the public, there hasn't been, um, any major, any major issues, maybe, uh, one or two people, um, that, that read the message, and they worked with, and so that's going well, giving staff some time. Bog Road, um, the sewer line construction, um, there were some trees that are starting to get knocked down, and, and the contractor's getting ready, so you might get some phone So you might get some phone calls about that. So we're anticipating starting construction in the next few weeks on the sewer line work. So Bog Road, East of 99, Chima Ranch, with the springtime coming, so Sanborn Road, you're starting to see some construction down off of Sanborn at Pebble Beach. So if you get some phone calls in that area, it's starting up for the year with some housing developments. And then recently, the planning commission at the last meeting last week, they approved entitlements for Starbucks and a gas station along Bridge Street at Shasta. And with that, I'd be, that's all I have to report.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Council reports. Councilmember Cole?
All right. So last couple of weeks, went to Yuba Sutter Transit Meeting, lots going on there. Secog with Mark. It was nice to go down to Sacramento and learn a little bit about what that's all about. And we got a tour of Rockland as well, which was impressive. I met with Michelle and Julie with the Children and Families Commission last week to get kind of prepared for the next meeting. Edward Jones Ribbon Cutting. And last week, I went and toured the wastewater management and John Ashley took me around. I was really, I was not grossed out, actually. I was so impressed and thought it was really incredible. He compared the wastewater treatment center to our bodies and each of the organs and it just made perfect sense. So if you're into science, it was actually an awesome place. And then I stopped by very briefly, the Slice of Respect 4G fundraiser for the fallen officer on Sunday, and there was a lot of people there. So it's just really heartwarming to see our community come together in hard times like these. And then lastly, this Thursday, I'll go on a ride along with Fire Station 7. So thank you, Jesse Alexander, for setting that up for me. That's it.
All right. Councilmember Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As with Councilmember Cole mentioned, we did have a transit meeting. It focused, the action items focused on the Caltrans State 70 Benny Junction project, which is moving forward with approval of a settlement terms of permanent easement and two temporary construction easements. And also with an approval of a property lease with the county of Yuba to move a portion of their operations during this construction period. The same meeting, we went ahead and created an ad hoc group to discuss the Seek Parade coming up in November in Terre Bona. And lastly, there is discussion based on the need of extending the service to the Lincoln and Roseville area. I would like to point out the, I walked out of a business the other day and I saw those, those lights on Center Street. Those are really sharp. If you haven't seen that already, it's pretty slick. And I also attended the, the, I don't know what you, it wasn't a parade, but the procession for the fallen officer in Marysville last week. And I certainly, I don't know what I expected, but I was absolutely blown away by the turnout, not only from our community, but law enforcement in general. I mean, there were, there were folks there from Truckee, Nevada City, Grass Valley, it seemed like everywhere. And that procession just went on forever. And so it was, it was nice to see our community could come together in a time like that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Puskali?
Thank you, Mayor. Was introduced, my member, board membership at the Arts Council last week. I would like to reach out to everyone that, to join the Arts Council. It's not that much, but that little bit of joining will bring so much more to our community. And with being a member, you get a little beautiful flyer. I don't know if everyone, you know, you have to be basically a member in order to get these little flyers that they send, but there's a lot going on. They're putting a lot together for the community. So that would be my shout out for the Arts Council. I was there with Councilman Kirchner on Thursday at that processional. And looking back at it, watching the KCRA coverage of it, I was so delighted to see how respectful from Yuba, Marysville, all the way to Roseville, the communities were. It, it made me feel warm and fuzzy for such a sad situation, but people were so respectful, the traffic was respectful. And I just wanted to let that be known, that I did notice that, that there wasn't a bunch of knuckleheads out there doing the wrong things in our community. So with that, I will complete my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start off by just saying how much respect and, and I guess, just a feeling of support for public safety in the region, especially in our community in light of what happened. A lot of folks responded to that particular incident, including fire, police, of course, and hospital folks that will be forever marked by this. And it's, it's important for us to honor all those folks who were impacted by this. But of course, mostly the, the young officer who gave his life tragically. On a, shifting to a different note, you know, it's, it's always, I think, a good feeling, excuse me, struggling with a little cold, I think, when I have professional presentations by staff and just the sheer amount in the millions of dollars that we get from grants that support what we do. And that doesn't become then a burden on the general fund. You know, if we sat back and actually calculated that, and we should probably do that more often to celebrate success. I know there's a lot of folks in the community that, you know, think we're less than, less than qualified as a city to, to do things and get things. But you know what? I have a super good feeling about the fact that we, and this goes to our staff, that they're out there every day doing the things that they need to do, given the resources that we are provided to give them to do things with, but then going out and grabbing more when they can. As Councilmember Cole mentioned, we did have a chance to take a tour of the city of Rockland, which has now been somewhat comparable to, in size to the city of Yuba City. They had 74,000 people. They are pretty landlocked, but they have done a really good job of conserving a lot of open space. But the sheer number of commercial opportunities they have is, is somewhat exciting. But it's also, you know, not, not a good thing to know, but they're going to be struggling similarly to us in, in the future with revenue, despite, you know, the Trader Joe's and the Nuggets and all those other things that are down there. So, you know, this is systemic, I think, to cities in general in California due to different things. And I was going to read a thing about how much road money has been robbed out of, by the state. It's over a billion bucks that, since 2018, that, that was taken away from, from road funding. And I bring that up as far as Secog goes because, you know, we're hammering away at Secog and, and they're doing a good job. It's a good return on our investment as far as a, an association that the city of Yuba City has. Tony was at the meeting where they authorized about, and Ben held me out here, it's about 2 million bucks in local transportation funds?
Yes.
That are coming for, for road projects here in Yuba City. And we're working with, closely with the county in a regional cooperation thing to do some projects, which we'll bring to you when they get approved. As far as other opportunities to do this city council thing that we all do, did have a meeting on Merriman. I do believe that others on the council have been having meetings as well. We continue to pursue whatever is potentially possible with that. I would like to report out on three ad hocks that I'm personally involved in. One is the revenue ad hoc with my colleague to my right. We've had one meeting. I think we're getting ready to schedule a second one coming up here very shortly. There's also a Terre Bona Transportation Ad hoc meeting that, that the mayor and I are on. And we, we don't have another meeting for that. I'm starting to get some feelers from the community about getting that scheduled. And I know that we'll probably start that after the second week in April. We'll get that on. And then there was a fair amount of, of feedback for my comments again on Adventist Ride Out and that ad hoc. And once again, I think probably by the end of, end of this month, we'll begin that process. Last thing I'll say is we do have, actually I have one other question. I know the planning commission selection process for us, do we know when we'll have to, we will start that process?
So the ordinance is officially in effect. So it was 30 days from the first meeting in April. And so any day here now, the ordinance is in effect. And so Doug and the team are going to work with Sierra. I think they've put some preliminary stuff together in order to do that. So I'm hoping in the next two to three weeks, we could give a schedule on how we'll kind of time that and then, then get with you and how we advertise.
Okay.
And so I, really, and we could work with, what do you think the realistic, you know, advertisement time is? And then, then how do we put that on the calendar and bring it back?
Perfect. Thanks. Final thing is, is the, take a little plug for the Yuba City Firefighters Association. They have this little thing called a rib feed that's sold out on Saturday. So looking forward to trying to stay clean while I eat ribs on Saturday. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thanks, Vice Mayor. I'm going to keep mine pretty brief tonight. First of all, Mark, thanks for all the work you're doing on Secog. So you stepped right in as Sean rolled off after several years and you're doing a great job there. Was on 93Q with Chief Alexander. He was sharing some great information about the change of the seasons, water safety and where people want to go dive into the river and remember the river is ice cold and they need to be safe, talking about the shift and their, their responses because it goes from fires to more water rescues and things of that nature during this time. Had the RWMA, which the main thing that they're looking at is bringing everyone compliant with 1383 and they've started doing more of the compliance audits and waivers there. So still haven't hit Yuba City. They started with everybody else, so those will be coming in the near future. Merriman Village, my God, we've all been working on that, it seems like, nonstop since we got that letter. I've had meetings with the state treasurer's office and James Gallagher's office and others for the last couple of weeks, solid, looking for any and all possibilities that we can possibly find. And, you know, about the only news that we can have there is, the news that we're getting is Habitat should be able to get an extension. So we've beat that drum, so that's looking like there. And so we have to follow up with them on, on making sure they get that extension because the higher ups says they will get it. The short end of that is really closing that gap, looks like it's really back on them as it always has been, to figure out a solution. And the solution is definitely not 7.5 million out of, out of the city coffers. So we have done everything to point them in various directions. I was working with Ms. Langley before she departed and Robert Bindorf, he's our interim city manager. We're not leaving any bush that hasn't been beat or any drum that hasn't been beat as well. So we're trying to everything we can to find them avenues that they can do that. In light of all the events over the past week, I want to say a special thank you to Chief Runyon and Chief Alexander in both your departments. Been very moving to watch what your departments are going through, to watch what the city is going through, but to watch the men and women under your command step up and they still just keep trucking. I know it has not been easy, but I just want to say publicly, and I'm sure on behalf of every one of us in the city, thank you for everything that you guys are doing. This council is here. If any of, any of your team members need anything, because we are here to support them and their well-being is absolutely paramount of everything. I know that you've covered Marysville along with Yuba County and given them the space that they need. And I know that you're also very instrumentally involved with the planning of the services. And just know that what you're doing is not going unnoticed. We see it. And the best way to describe it is we see each of you hurting and I think we all hurt right along with you. So know that you're not alone in everything that you guys do and thank you for everything you do. With that, I'm going to move us into adjournment tonight. And we are going to close the meeting tonight in memory of Officer Rodarte of the Marysville Police Department. He made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, serving with honor, integrity, and unwavering commitment to protecting the people of Marysville and we can say our community as well. He was more than just an officer. He was a father, a friend, a veteran, and as we've heard over and over, a true hero. Our thoughts and prayers are with Officer Rodarte's family, friends, and the entire law enforcement community during this incredibly difficult time. His legacy in service will never be forgotten by any of us. And in his honor and in his memory, we will stand adjourned tonight.